All right, good evening. I call this meeting to order. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and our City Council. We're here tonight to talk about our our development work session for FY 2021, primarily dealing with our CIP right now. Our agenda tonight will focus on the overall process process updates in terms of the key dates that we have moving forward. And also too, just a review of our long-term financial policies in which we utilize in order to put this together as well as our regular budget. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in terms of dates and different things that we need to adhere to in order to be in compliance with the adoption of the budget. And then we'll go through the FY 21 to 25 Capital Improvement Program in detail, but I'm gonna give a brief summary of that. And then we'll talk a little bit more about affordability in terms of how we plan to fund these capital projects moving forward over the next five years. And then we have some other considerations and then we'll have a discussion at the conclusion of the meeting. So moving on to our budget process updates in terms of the key dates. We do have, starting November 26th, the presentation of the CIP to the Planning Commission. We'll have that work session and then we'll come back on the 10th and have the public hearing with the Planning Commission. And moving forward to March 2nd, we'll do our proposed city and school operating and capital budget, which we'll formally present to you, the council. And then we'll come back on March 16th for the public hearing as far as the first budget and tax rate. And then on April 6th, we'll move forward with our first reading of the budget, as well as trying to get the budget approval for the first reading and tax levy approval. And then lastly, on April 14th, it'll be our second reading pertaining to the budget and tax levy and getting your approval on that. As I mentioned before, with the number of dates and we want to make sure that everyone's available for those, but these are very important dates. We'll make sure that everyone is informed in terms of what we're trying to do with our budget for fiscal year 2021. December 11th, we'll start out with our first budget work session. And we're still trying to determine a date for January for our City Council retreat. I know Kena has been working with our newly-elected council members to make sure that we all are able to nail that date down in January. In February 6th, we'll have our budget work session, another budget work session and budget development. And let me just say one thing too. I know we talked about this a little bit in terms of the dates and number of meetings that we have. As we become more familiar with this process, we will look at the number of days that we have as far as these numbers of meetings and see if we can, you know, cut back on a couple of the dates. Because some of this stuff may be redundant and, you know, we want to have very informative meetings. Moving forward to March 5th, and we'll be meeting a whole lot in March, as I just mentioned with the March 2nd and the March 16th dates previously, we'll be meeting again on March 5th for the budget work session, which will be revenue and expenditures. And then on March 12th, we'll have the budget work session to talk about the CIP again. And then on the 25th, we'll have our community budget forum. And then March 26th, we'll have our budget work session, which will be our third one for outside agencies. And then we'll just wrap it up with the budget work session on talk on April 9th. As I mentioned before, you know, we do have a meeting on the 6th of April as well as on the 14th, which will be the second reading of the budget and the level of the levy approval. Moving on, as I told you, as I mentioned before, pertaining to the financial policies that we put in place, which were put in place by the City Council. And we utilize those to put together our CIP plan, which will be also used to put together our general fund, which is basically to maintain at least 14% of the general fund budget. The reserve fund balance of no less than 3% of the general fund budget. We want to make sure that we maintain sufficient capital in the utilities funds, which is inclusive of water, wastewater, and gas. We want to stabilize all nine general funds by ensuring they have a positive fund balance. And then also too, keeping our debt service as a percentage of the general fund expenditure budget at the ceiling of 10%, but our target continues to be 9%. And transfer 1% of the Mills tax revenue to the debt service fund to be used for debt service.
And do we have the information about the current balance amount?
In terms of our?
In the accounts?
One more time.
So do we have like the reserve fund?
Yes.
What are those current numbers? Are they on or not in?
The general fund reserve?
Yes.
So it's roughly?
I had that earlier.
Hold on one second, I got it for you. It's about 32 million. The 14% that we set aside is 26.4 million. And the 3% of the economic downturn reserve is 5.6. That's just the general fund.
All right, moving on. And here's the reason why we're here tonight to talk about the Capital Improvement Program for 2021. And just in brief and summary, for 2021, it's about 35.8 million in total expenditures. We, overall over the next five years, our capital plan is $127.9 million. But as I wanted to do, it just basically go back over and give a recap of fiscal year 19 to 20 to talk about our overall increase in our expenditures in the capital budget, which we went from 23 million to 35 million, which was an increase of $11 million. And overall percentage change was about 51%. And when we moved into 20, going into 21, it's just a comparison when we did the budget, because we went from 35 million in FY 20 to 35.8 million in FY 21, which is our current budget that we're working on now. It was about a $403,000 difference. So it's about a 1.14% change from FY 20. Now, the reason why it's so tight in 2021 was because of our expenditures coming over from FY 20 being 35 million, 35.4 million. As I mentioned, FY 21 is 35.8 million. So that's about a $400,000 difference from the previous fiscal year. And keep in mind, we did remain consistent with your overall goals for affordable housing as well as the schools reconfiguration. So we kept those numbers exactly the same. But we had to modify some of our projections in terms of some of the projects that we were gonna do over the next five years to be able to basically afford it based upon our revenue for next fiscal year. In terms of our revenue, our cash, in terms of the transfer from the general fund, that was an increase about 3%, which is based upon our policy, a little bit more than 3%. So our revenues for FY 21 is a total of 7.3 million. Our mall vendor fees, we kept that consistent with last year with $125,000. As far as our year-end appropriations, we haven't gotten that yet. We should be closing that out very soon. I would say probably in the middle to closer to the end of December to be able to provide you with those year-end appropriation revenues.
Are we supposed to be following along on a?
No, 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 I'm just talking. I'm just talking right now. And then we'll come back to the PowerPoint. If I start talking too much, just tell me.
No, that, I just, I just needed some clarity. Thank you.
Great, yep. So we didn't put any money into reprogramming existing CIP budget dollars yet because we want to know exactly what the council wants to do moving forward into 21 and if we're able to do that. But based upon what we've been doing in terms of looking at the overall budget, it's gonna be very tight in terms of being able to reprogram dollars going into 2021. Our miscellaneous revenue, that has gone up and that's primarily due to VDOT money that we've received for various projects. Our bonds, we went from 22.7 million in '20 to 26.9 million in FY 21. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in terms of our bond capacity and where we are in terms of our bond amount that we want to stay within. We don't want to get too close to our limit, our bond limit. So moving down with our overall expenditures, and this is just high level right now. And we'll go through all the details in a moment. But on the educational piece, as I mentioned before, for FY 20, we had 6.5 million in there in the budget. But in FY 21, we went down to 3.4 million. Now, that decrease is primarily due to the design dollars that were put in there in FY 20 and then us moving some of the small cap dollars out. So we're looking at 3.4 billion in FY 21. Moving on to our overall facilities, we had at 1.5 billion in FY 20, but in FY 21, we're increasing up to 3.4 billion. And $1.5 million is for a project that we had to do over at Smith Recreational Facility. Terms of public safety, in FY 20, we had 3.7 in there. We moved that to 4.9 million. And some of the highlights from that is the purchase of a fire truck and EMS apparatus as well as the funding that's in there for the district court. And then also with the radios and technology for our public safety. Transportation access, we moved from FY 20 to FY 21, difference from 9.8 million to 18.4 million, which is money going towards the Belmont Bridge, the parking structure on West Main, and then $650,000 pertaining to our VDOT projects, which is primarily on East High Street and Hydraulics. Our parks and recreation, we went down a considerable amount of money from FY 20 to 21. Went from 1.8 to 680,000. That's inclusive of the Darden Towne Park, which was primarily with lighting. Then also, we put money in there for affordable housing, which is still consistent with your overall mission and target goals for affordable housing. And then we went from FY 20 with 2 million over to 2.2 million. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in detail as we go through the budget. And then Friendship Court, 5.5 million down to 394,000. And we'll talk a little bit more about why that is where it is based upon primarily just the projects and where they are in terms of delivery of, you know, the construction part of it and other internal decisions we had to make in terms of agreements and different things like that that had to be met. Friendship CRHA, we went down from 3.20 to 1.5 in '21. Economic Development in '21, we're going back to adding $150,000 in there for various miscellaneous projects, which we didn't put anything in there in FY 20. The Stormwater Initiatives, I know that was one of our capital projects, but we do have a stormwater utility. So those small projects for $50,000 can be expensed out of the stormwater utility fund that we do have. The technology infrastructure, we took that down slightly from 297,000 to 290,000. And what that is, basically the citywide technology needs, we're gonna look at possibly streamlining that in terms of getting those various projects identified prior to the fiscal year and be able to put that into the budget to talk about those needs rather than going through the entire fiscal year and then talking about different needs throughout the different departments and rather do that in the beginning of the fiscal year. And then lastly, our other governmental projects. We're moving from 1 million to 325,000 in FY 21. And the difference is primarily, we did move the money this fiscal year for the senior center or for the C center, the $600,000. So if you go along with me and you look at the various projects that we have as far as the school projects, and I gave you a high-level overview of them, but there are some of the things that we have in it. You just take a few minutes just to review those. Then we're moving over to city facilities. Public safety.
Sorry, what is the TARA?
That's the Threat and?
Oh, that's right. That's right, sorry. It's a new acronym for me, but I have seen it. Threat and Risk Assessment.
Transportation Access. Parks and Recreation. Other capital projects. Affordable Housing. And the last item I wanted to talk about is primarily dealing with future funding requests. As I talked about before, as far as our the amount of space we have in terms of our debt service and what we were able to do within our revenues, our projected revenues for FY 21. As you can see, you know, the revenue side of that for our overall expenditures, we had to do some things in terms of being able to reduce our overall expenditures to be able to afford our capital projects, whether they were bondable or non-bondable. But moving forward, I just think that we need to really think about in terms of our debt service capacity, our various projects that we do have online coming. And then in order for us to stay within our own policy in terms of our target for debt service on an annual basis, target of 9%, but not exceeding 10%. Because these are large-scale projects. When we talk about schools reconfiguration, although we have the 3 million in there for the design work, there's still a significant amount of money that we would have to put into building new schools. And we talked about it before, it was between 55 million-plus dollars for that. But, you know, when we talk about our debt capacity, we're gonna have to, you know, either look at if we do it without going over our debt capacity or, like I said, our own internal financial policies is to, you know, and, you know, I just want to be clear because if we do go over or extend it to that limit, you know, that impacts our bond rating. And then when you impact your bond rating, you know, it costs more to borrow money rather than it is now being AAA where, you know, it's at a much lower rate. Or we have to look at possibly reducing staff to be able to afford those things. And then other things that we could do in terms of being able to afford the debt service. But just keeping aware of where we're at in terms of our capacity and then overall policies. Because, you know, we look at too, our New Hill Project, how much that'll cost in terms of development of that area? And then moving our city facilities over to Avon, it would take a significant amount of money plus remediation of the site. Also too, we talked about it in working on West Main Street, the development across the bridge and the cost that it'll take for that. Another, I would say about a close to 20 million dollars to be able to do that. But we do have funds in here as well as FY 20, our current fiscal year, '21 and '22. It's a total of $12 million with '21 and '22 being $4 million each year. And then also too, affordable housing. We put a significant amount of money into affordable housing over the last year. And we're also staying consistent with that and moving forward with the dollars that we're putting there for each fiscal year over the next five years. With affordable housing, a total, it was about $26 million, which is inclusive of FY 20. And then 19 million over the next five years. As well as with CRHA, it's $15 million, including FY 20. But $12 million over the next five years and then that additional 3 million, we stretched that out over a six-year period. So, you know, that total amount is a total of 18 million if you look at it, if you take it from fiscal year '21 up to fiscal year '26. What we wanted to do is make sure, and I've done this with all our numbers, is to make sure that when we talk, when we talk to each of these different organizations, I wanted to see how much money they actually spent within this fiscal year, which is fiscal year '20. If they didn't expend all of their dollars in FY 20 and we get close to the end of the year as we, you know, are approaching in terms of, you know, looking for the, I mean, going through the entire fiscal year, if they haven't spent all their money within a certain period of time, they're not gonna spend all that money in FY 20. Some of that money's gonna be spilled over into FY 21. So I wanted to make sure that those expenditures were correct as we move forward. So what I had was to have them give me information pertaining to each fiscal year in terms of what they plan to spend. Because I said before, you know, I don't want to, you know, exceed our internal policies with the 9% target, 10% overall, or expand our debt capacity, you know, and limit some of the other projects to be able to fit it in within our revenues for a given fiscal year. So we were able to do that. So that's why it's spread out over that period of time. But with CRHA, I just want to say one thing, that's bondable dollars. So if they come back with their expenditures and they are able to spend more within a given fiscal year, then we'll come back to the council to say, you know, we're gonna have to increase the amount of funding that we're providing them within a fiscal year. And then with PHA, Public Housing Authority?
Quick question about CRHA. So even though it's bondable dollars, you're still talking about the max being this $12 million?
No, I'm talking about, well, let me say 12 million over the next five years.
Yes.
But if they're able to spend that other 3 million, which would give them a total of 15 million, then we'll come back and say that we can go out, we're gonna have to increase or issue more debt to be able to provide them with that additional 3 million. But right now, in the way that it looks, I don't know if they're gonna be able to spend all that over the next five years. So that's why we have it budgeted at $12 million. Because the $3 million that was given in '20 still hasn't been spent at this time.
So in terms of decreasing versus making sure that the funds are available once, because they will need the funds, why is it, why is the strategy to, you know, kind of take it, take the $3 million away that they haven't used versus?
No, no, the money's still there in '20. They just haven't used it yet. So what we did is spread it out a little bit based upon the money that they're gonna use.
So this 12 million, if they come and they need more than 12 million, we still have to weigh in our cap for bonds, right? The capacity for bonding?
Yeah, but we've already got that figured out in our, in our, in our structure in terms of having that money available for them. Remember, this is bondable, it's not cash.
And the timeline, you, the timelines for each of these, did you all had a meeting with them?
We had a meeting with them as well as our, I'll say our representative from the city to be able to talk about that. But, you know, our discussions now has moved on since Grant will be leaving to be able to have, you know, more discussions with them. But right now, the way we're looking is that, you know, like I said, you know, I want them to be able to use that 3 million in '20. But if they don't use it in '20, we'll just move it into '21. Plus, we've already got money allocated in there for FY 21 for them to use also.
So there'll be 4.5 million up to that amount if everything were to roll over, that they have the capacity to use within the next 18 months?
It would be 4.5 million, yes.
It's not taking it away.
And then the other thing is too, that we talked about a great deal, and I've had a lot of people come to my office to talk about McIntyre Park as well as Tonsler, developing that. So, you know, with those projects, that's multi-million dollars. So what we're looking at now and as possibly, as I told the directors when we developed this budget, was to only put in our budget essential CIP projects and something that can be done. As we looked at overall CIP, what we're seeing that, you know, we have projects that extend over multi-years. And what we want to do is basically get to the point where we're closing out projects before we start new projects. And that will, you know, you know, expand the amount of money that we have and then give us, you know, the ability to say, you know, if you're not gonna do this project over in the next five years, it's still relevant so that we will have the amount of dollars for our capital projects. And then we don't have to move other capital projects. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Chrissy Hamel to talk about our overall affordability.
So looking at the CIP, we basically fund the CIP with two major sources of money. One is a transfer from the general fund, which is basically cash or otherwise known as PEGO. And then the second major source is bonds. The other revenues, as Dr. Richardson alluded to, we've used year-end surpluses as part of our policy to transfer to the CIP as additional PEGO. We also, last year, looked at projects to close those out. And then other sources of money such as VDOT or money from our other local partners, the county, for projects that we manage and things of that nature. For FY 21, the current proposal would fund the CIP with about 70% debt and 21% of that would be cash. So in digging into each of those a little bit deeper, if we look at the debt funding, the next five years, we are projecting to fund roughly $83 million of bonds to fund the projects we have laid out over the next five years. The increase to the general fund just for the debt service would be about $3.8 million over the next five years. So as the chart shows you without, because a lot of things are subject to change, but as the chart shows you, our costs for debt are increasing every year. So any natural growth that you get from in the general fund, parts of those revenues are already dedicated to support the debt service that we're planning for in the CIP. Looking to cash, we, the five-year plan currently before you funds about $41.7 or 8 million in general fund contributions over the next five years. The graph here sort of shows typically, we have a little bit more steady. We try to plan out a little more steady transfer from the general fund. There are spikes in '22 and '24 because of the way the Friendship Court funding is currently structured in the current plan. Again, this is something we could look at. But the cash, again, the cash increase from the general fund would also be increasing. And we do have a policy that requires we transfer at least 3% of the general fund expenditures to the CIP. And looking at the general fund contributions a little bit, so the 3% policy that I just referenced, this kind of gives you a history of what we have used in terms of PEGO to fund the CIP. As I said, our policy is 3%, but with the year-end surplus transfers that we have typically transferred in, we average closer to about 5% PEGO annually. This year with, I'm sorry, with the 20 CIP, we actually programmed in a little more than the 3% again because of the affordable housing projects that we council decided to fund on the cash side. We also, a little bit different from what we've done in the past, is the surplus typically just goes to a contingency fund to allow you all to program that at a later date or as things come up. And last year, we dedicated the entire surplus transfer to affordable housing projects. And then we should know soon, I think that's coming to you in January, there will probably be an additional transfer from the FY 19 year end. Again, just to sort of reiterate some of what Dr. Richardson has said and some of what, some of the other slides. some of the other slides, in looking at the CIP, eventually, we are going to need to look to new sources of funds to pay for projects, be it to pay cash or either to fund additional debt. And so it's important to prioritize your decisions related to how we fund capital projects. And kind of just to give you a snapshot of what we've seen here, just looking at twenty-one and twenty-two, based on the version of the CIP you have in front of you. Twenty-one, we would be looking at just under four hundred thousand dollars additional money from the general fund for the, to meet our general fund three percent transfer or cash transfer, and then additional three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to pay for the additional debt service. So right out of the chute, that's roughly seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of additional money from the general fund just to pay for the CIP. When you look forward to twenty-two, again, the cash contribution increases because of the cash funding that we have programmed for the Friendship Court program, so that you're looking at roughly a two point one million dollar increase in the general fund to fund both the cash contribution and the debt.
Relative to that specifically, I mean, how do we feel about the timelines for those needs for that specific project and initiative? Just thinking about where we are now, as you were talking about earlier, that so far no money has been expended for Phase One, and these are further out phases. I'm just trying to get a sense for, is there more flexibility in that timeline, or is that, those are the dates that you were given from Piedmont Housing Alliance?
Sorry, Brenda, to put you on the spot, but do you want to speak to that?
And another point I would like to make is, when we approved the budget, I know you all took current numbers, but we only approved for Phase One. So why is this happening differently than normal process in terms of presenting to us annually and us making a decision? I mean, I understand that you all need to plan long-term, but to make that a priority when that hasn't been decided yet?
What we did was, as you look at your budget in more detail, especially with the Public Housing Authority, we did look at it and we budgeted in terms of the phases, Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, if you look at your detailed budget. As far as with CRHA, my understanding that that was already determined about the amount of funding that was going into the housing. But that was based upon, let me just say this, it was a, it was a number that was given, but this was based upon those expenditures as we go from one phase to the next, also with CRHA.
But there's still just projections, like every year, we look at the CIP and we really are only making a decision on this upcoming fiscal year.
Well-
And we're projecting out what future years, and this, raising this awareness so that we know that this is going to be some hitting points, that we're going to have some more maybe tougher decisions to make. But I guess, can we go, do you mind if I just-
Yeah, yeah, but based upon the numbers that were given in fiscal year twenty about how much was going to be funded for these projects, we had to identify that and project it so that you would have that. And then for each year, I mean, moving forward, I mean, that's something that you want to go in a different direction. In terms of each phase of the project, we could make modifications. What I'm saying, we just put this together, we put this together to be able to showcase to you about how much was, you know, projected to be spent in each fiscal year.
And that's why it's important for me to understand the timelines, because I, as we've just learned, I pushed back on this last budget cycle, how much does anyone really need in this fiscal year when we were trying to determine this budget? And I'm just curious how much we think we're actually going to spend in this fiscal year, and then what do we think it's going to play out in the future phases?
And that's why we went to those developers for those projects, to be able to talk about how much are you actually going to spend? Because if you look at this fiscal year and what was, you know, the expenditures at this point today, you know, a lot of it hasn't been spent. So that's why we want to make sure to ask those questions, as Brenda will present to you, just to be able to tell us exactly what's going to be spent from year to year. So Brenda, if you can break it down in terms of the phases.
So for the record, Brenda Kelly, redevelopment manager. So last year, when we were working on the CIP with both Friendship Court and Housing Authority, I'll kind of break it down. So let's start with Friendship Court. So we approached Friendship Court and said, can you give us your cost estimates that you have prepared for your redevelopment activities coming up? So as you know, in March, they filed for, submitted for their LI-Tech application, which they were approved just for Phase One. However, in regards to the infrastructure improvements that we received cost estimates for, a lot of their infrastructure improvements have to be done upfront along with Phase One that may cover also Phase Two, Three, and Four further on. So a lot of the infrastructure improvements are kind of front-loaded upfront, and you'll see in your CIP budgets, it's identified as Friendship Court infrastructure improvements and Friendship Court redevelopment. So the redevelopment is basically going towards the affordable housing. So when they submitted their requests for last year, we really had a shortfall, and that's where that three hundred amount comes in for this year to cover that shortfall they were going to have last year. And then their projections going forward cover basically their affordable housing based on the projected number of units for Phase Two and Three. So those are based on their LI-Tech applications at that time and the proposed award and start of construction. So if they submit their LI-Tech applications in March timeframe, they're awarded in June, they can typically start construction December, January of that year, the following year. So that's when they'll need the funding. We are still talking to them directly, can that full amount be spread out over two years? And they probably can be looking at that. So in your budget projections right now, it's shown as the one year, but you can probably spread that out over the two years if you need to. Are there any questions on Friendship Court before we move to Housing Authority?
When does the timing go, when you think they're actually going to start to use the current funding that's been allocated for this current fiscal year?
So we are currently working on the agreement with them, and that will be basically a reimbursement type. As they complete improvements, they can do drawdowns against the funding. They're looking to start December, January on the construction.
Oh, okay.
And a lot of that will, again, be the infrastructure upfront that they have to do.
All right.
So as to-
And CRHA-
-Housing Authority. So Housing Authority, as you know, submitted a LI-Tech application for Crescent-
So just one quick question. So this assumes that we and future councils would have agreed to this funding, right? I'm just asking, when did that vote take place?
So you approved your CIP dollars that are currently in place now.
I know that.
But both Friendship Court and Housing Authority are very aware that every year, the CIP budget has to be approved for that year. It's anticipated projections looking at the five-year. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
But they're very aware that CIP is only approved annually by year.
Okay.
Your formal approval would be when you approve the CIP?
I understand, but this looks very final, the way that this is presented. That's just why I'm asking. And I just, and that just means, especially with the new council, we just need to make sure we have this conversation upfront. If applications are going in based on information that we are presenting in dollar amounts, then that means that that's final, that's not open, really not necessarily to discussion. And I'm not saying we wouldn't approve because affordable housing is a top priority, I'm just, I just had the question around that we only approved one budget and not a five-year time span.
Correct, correct. They are aware of that. So as to Housing Authority, they submitted the LI-Tech application in March for Crescent Halls, which is the renovation of the one hundred and five units, and they have a portion of the three million you approved going towards that project. That now looks like they have pushed that forward a little bit or back. So it looks like they're looking at probably a March-April timeframe to start the construction on Crescent Halls. And then after that comes the South First Street Phase One, which now looks like a May-June timeframe. So they're going to get Crescent Hall started first, March-April is now their anticipated start construction date, May-June Phase One of South First Street. And that's utilizing the three million approved. I'm sorry?
That's a year later.
Well, it's, they were actually talking December-January, so it's four months, five months later. And then remember, what you approve here comes into place July first.
Right, yeah.
But you're still in, you're also going through an agreement with them right now.
Correct.
And when will council see these agreements or have any kind of headlights of just kind of what-
Well, you'll see the Friendship Court sooner because it's basically the general fund dollars. The Housing Authority agreement is based on bond dollars, so that has to also go through bond council, and we have not yet gotten all the documents we need from the Housing Authority to put that agreement in place. Thank you. You're welcome.
Dr. Richardson, and will we be talking about this with the CRHA at the next meeting?
One more time, I couldn't hear you.
Will we be talking about this kind, this topic with the CRHA at the meeting that they present to us?
Well, that is supposed to be the case. They're supposed to be talking about that also, so you'll be more clear on terms of, you know, their proposed expenditure, timeframes.
If we have questions, because I looked at the memo briefly, and I don't, is there any additional information that's going to come from CRHA in advance of the meeting for that? Because otherwise, I'm going to send a bunch of questions.
We've been working on that to try to get that information, but we haven't gotten anything yet.
Okay.
And that's why your agenda is not listed.
Reflected of that.
Yes.
It's just a memo.
It's just a memo.
So if we have questions, they should go through Ms. Kelly, and then she can-
Yeah, but I mean, I would think that you'll be able to do that at the next council meeting when they present.
I just want to make sure that if I have questions, that they're prepared to answer those questions?
Yes, well, we could do that.
I can help you with that.
Okay.
FY, I've been having a discussion with, is this on?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. I've been having a discussion with Mr. Duffield in the morning at nine-thirty a.m.
Okay.
So I'm relaying emphatically, make sure we get the information in. So I fully expect that it should be in tomorrow.
Thank you.
So we talked about, this is a slide we show every year, just if you were to consider raising taxes or some type of tax, these are the, some of the bigger ones. And this is just to give you a rough idea of what a penny increase would look like if you so chose to use that as an avenue for increasing revenues. And then finally, along with that, just to, you know, illustrate the fact that even if you do a penny increase, we do have an agreement with the schools so that the real estate and the personal property, any new revenue, they get, they actually receive forty percent. So even though, for example, a penny on the real estate is worth seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, we only receive sixty percent of that that we can use for the general fund because the forty percent goes to the schools.
Is that, that's interesting. I hadn't, I don't think I'd ever understood that that was an, that's an agreement, because it's a, it's a-
It's a policy.
A policy, right? But, but because we've always been over it, but then the last three years, we've done in excess, we've given more to them. I mean, I think that we were baseline giving more, but then also, we agreed to supplemental extra allocations.
For many years, we've exceeded the forty percent.
But so that would, but it would be, it seems weird that if you were already planning to give in excess of the policy, and then there's been a pattern of giving, you know, extra allocations, which we've done for three years in a row, that there would be some default carve-out from, it, it's not in, there's no, it doesn't have the force, there's no law or, or, I mean, it's not an agreement that has any binding effect on council. Is there any, what is-
It's just like any other budget policy. It's like a budget policy, that's all.
Yeah, this was a policy that council adopted many years ago as part of the, the annual budget policies that we have, budget development policies that we have each year. It is by far at the purview of council to, to look at that and change it as they see fit, but it was one that we put in many years ago. And we've, as Chrissy said, we've traditionally exceeded that almost every year above that forty percent with what we give to the schools, but-
I guess what I'm responding to, and this will come to, you know, future councils, but if, I don't get that if the council decided to increase the tax rate, that by definition, forty percent of that new increase would have to go to the school budget. Is that the case?
It currently is per policy, but council could have the discretion to change that with the tax increase.
We've had that discussion before in terms of allowing dollars to not go specifically to that. I mean, we've, we've done it before, but it is the policy. I mean, I know-
And to get to your point, if we're getting to the budget development phase, and we have exceeded that policy and then, to what we're giving to the city schools, and then council decides that they wanted to raise, say, the real estate tax, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to carve out forty percent because we're already over that policy-
Right.
-at, at the beginning. But if we, if, as a direction, council says, we want to look at this budget having a tax raise, there would be that carve-out to, to consider.
Okay.
And that's true even as, obviously, as the market drives increases, they get any of that additional funding, forty percent of it. Not our, us consciously making a decision to raise it, but just through assessments-
Correct.
-increasing.
Any new revenue.
Yeah, I mean-
That's correct. Doesn't have to be a tax increase.
By the same token, the, the future council could decide that they would just stick to the forty percent contribution, and it rises and falls as per real estate valuations increase or taxes increase. But right now, we're always in a position where we're asked to pay more. So instead of, you know, just, that's the other thing, is they know that, that's just it, and that's, you go forward.
That's correct. And then finally, just other considerations. So we are just looking at the CIP right now, and so it's easy to kind of get tunnel vision, and we did want to just bring up a few points about the fact that we, as we start this budget season, we still are very, very early in the process. So there are lots of other considerations for funding that we still don't know about yet. Things in the operating budget, such as what the compensation looks like. We are just starting to go through departmental requests, so, you know, whether there's increases or decreases there, there's considerations for that. We don't yet know what the school operating budget needs are, you know, the school reconfiguration and capacity changes, and then just because it is early, there's just a vast unknown for what we will be looking at in terms of future funding. So I guess the takeaway, just in general, for the CIP is, last year was a very aggressive CIP, this is a very aggressive CIP, and as you look at this and take consideration for the funding or the projects that are set forward, you know, there are increased funding needs and stresses that will be apparent for the general fund, both just for the CIP but operating as well.
So relative to compensation, what is the timeline for a study that's going to be done?
We're, we're in the process of, of talking about that. We recently hired our new HR director.
So we won't have all the information for this budget cycle?
We probably won't for this budget cycle. We'll probably get close, but I doubt that we will be ready to present by the time we get ready to adopt a budget.
I'm just thinking it's easier to do this over a couple of years, so even if there's some information that would allow us to take some steps in the right direction, and then to then have all the information in terms of a next budget cycle. I just know that to go from probably what it's going to tell us to where we are today could be significant. I'm just guessing.
Definitely.
I think we would need the information and-
Yeah, yeah, I just, I'm trying to understand like how much would be available by, you know, a March timeframe.
Yeah, I don't think that we'll be there by March.
Right, okay.
And then as I said before too, with the comp study, you have the, the bottom, you have the midpoint, you had the highest point. And what I've been stressing to the staff was that, you know, we're going to have to start this because it's been so many years since you've had a true overall comp study of the entire city and all the positions, that we'll probably have to start at the low end and work our way up over a period of time to get to that highest end. But over the years, as we're looking to get to that, we'll make adjustments along the way to keep us in line, so we won't fall back. So each year won't get, our gap won't get larger and larger.
Because obviously, historically, we have done obviously a COLA, which is across the board. I'm just trying to get a sense for even if we have any information to be a little more strategic in how we allocate that to address the concern that you're saying, that there are some that may be really lagging.
And I think with the, the experience and the knowledge of our new HR director, I'm sure she'll be able to provide that data to us, so we'll be prepared for the forthcoming budget.
And that was just one thing, just on the record, since she just started, that I asked for last year. I thought that instead of it being the four point one seven across the board, that we could be more strategic um, to start meeting some of those needs, so, um, hopefully we'll look at that.
I, I was just gonna say, um, at this point, we're gonna open up for you guys, any questions or discussions you may have. But before we did that, I did wanna point out to council and to, to the public that this presentation and all the information that we provided to city council is up on the city budget website under the FY twenty-one budget work sessions. And as we go through each work session, um, we'll post the presentations and any, uh, background materials that we give to city council um, so that, that it will be there for everyone to, to view as well as bring copies with us to the, to the work sessions. But I guess at this point, it's, any questions or discussions that you guys would have?
I mean, just themes for me are just, safety of our streets is like a big priority. And we continue last year, I know that, um, Council Galvin and I both brought up, um, the Elliott Avenue. Mr. Oberdorfer, was there, I thought I had an email about some other funding source for Elliott, maybe through some other. I mean, I don't know if I'm just making this up or if I just was dreaming that it came through, but I just thought that something in the last year has come up that we might have another funding source besides the city, but maybe I'm just making that up or, or Alex is here too. Um, I didn't, sorry, I didn't see Alex back there. Cause I, I know it's a significant dollar amount to do the full street scape, but especially as we're looking at these redevelopment projects that are off of Elliott, I just think this is continuing to be a priority for safety.
Yeah, good evening, councilors. Um, the, we found some funding to, uh, implement the project. Uh, the design is almost complete and it's been reviewed by the city and then respond, um, comment provided to the consultants. Uh, there was, um, revenue sharing money, you know?
Revenue sharing money, okay.
Yeah, that's available. So we've put it together for one point two million dollars.
Okay, so we put some money towards it and then they were able, okay, so that's actually happened. I just wanna make sure I can talk to constituents.
Yeah, it's ready to go.
Accurately, okay. Cause I'm, okay, good, I didn't make that up. I did digest that at one point. Thank you, cause that was one priority that I know we had last year that was really a struggle to not be able to commit to. So what is the timeline for when that will be implemented?
Uh, I think, uh, uh, I wanna check with staff, maybe we have to, uh, you know, come to council for approval, but the money is there, uh, in the CIP and then revenue sharing from the state, one point two million dollars.
Okay, so where does that fall into our world?
Probably sometime next year, early next year.
Okay, next calendar year or fiscal year?
Probably in late spring, probably start, uh, yeah. But the money is there to do the project.
So where is the, our portion of it in the CIP? Just so I know where to find these things.
We can, we can find it and send it to the city council, but the money is there, it's been identified in the CIP.
Okay.
Um, Vice Mayor Hill and, and colleagues, uh, related to this, eh, this discussion, um, I had asked, uh, Ms. Kelly as the redevelopment manager to please give us some idea, give me some idea of how much of our local dollar investment is, is leveraging state and federal dollars for, for our infrastructure improvements. And, um, I think you're, Ms. Kelly's tweaking a few more things, but the, and I will certainly share it with everybody, but I think it was pretty impactful. By my early calculations, it was like we get one and a half times more money from our local investments in the capital projects from state and federal sources. So we do expand our capacity when we invest smartly in these revenue sharing projects and our smart scale projects. So I, I will, I will share that with everyone. I just got the preliminary and it was very well done. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. And I think it would be, I would love, I would think future councils would like to see a similar kind of overview of, of West Main Street, of all our infrastructure, how we're using those local dollars to expand our reach by applying and securing state and federal monies. It, because it's not just only us doing the investing.
I would agree with that.
It was really a very good job, Ms. Kelly did.
Um, I have a, I just have another, uh, couple of questions about the transportation and access. And this may just be my lack of understanding. I'm not sure if, I just can't remember if I've asked this in the past, but just looking, like, understanding the pressures that you're describing. So, like, I know that these are capital expenses as opposed to operating. So you've got, every year you've got, um, you know, like a hundred thousand dollars for new sidewalks, five hundred thousand for sidewalk repair, uh, two hundred thousand for SIA implantation, ADA improvements, and every year it looks like this is adding up to like, you know, close to a million dollars. And I'm curious about if you're getting to a situation where you're doing that every year as a annual capital expenditure, is that because you're hiring contractors or how, or is there a way that that could become cheaper to somehow absorb those expenses as the operating expenses of a, cause it's the city public works department, right? That, that's doing this. I mean, how, is there, I, I'm, I'm trying to remember if in the past CFPs we've looked, it's been this expensive every year. With, but the, the numbers seem higher to me than in the past, like five hundred thousand for sidewalk repair. And then there was also the street, the street milling and paving, a million dollars, two million dollars, two million dollars. Is there a way of doing this more cheaply, basically, that would just fold them into the operating budget?
Let Paul come up and answer the first part of the question. I'll answer the second part of the question.
Good evening. Uh, to answer your question, so, um, there has been a rise in the, in the cost of construction, uh, first of, first of all. And then second of all, there's also been a decline in available contractors. Uh, so currently we have two concrete crews. We're working on, um, staffing up a third concrete crew if we get that in the operating budget, uh, for FY twenty-one. Um, but there is a shortage of available contractors, so, um, the numbers that you see in the budget represent a few things. It could be, um, funds that are leveraged through other, um, projects that are, that need, that require a local match. Uh, it could also be in-house engineered projects that are contracted or it could be in-house work that is also, uh, done through the operating side of the budget, which is not included in that number.
So what is it that makes, uh, sound really ignorant, but what is it that makes it, makes it a capital expense rather than an operating expense? So if it's a city-owned department with city, city staff and city-owned trucks, right? Are we, like, what, what is it that makes it capital rather than?
So it's, it's by definition, if it's over fifty thousand dollars, so it could be a length of two, three hundred feet of sidewalk that, um, the value of that could be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of work being done uh, versus our in-house crews that do basically spot repairs.
Even if it's maintenance, cause these are not describing new, these are, these are milling and, and maintenance and repair items. They're not, they're not, but built, I mean, they're not a capital project. That still is considered.
So we do have capital milling. We, we have a company that will come in and actually mill all of the trip hazards in the city.
Yeah.
And so we, um, either use a cooperative contract or bid that work out, and again, it's over fifty thousand dollars. So it's just how it's classified.
By definition, they're bondable types of projects because they extend the life of the street. So it's easier for us to add this to the CIP and fund it over multiple years, over the life of that. Um, and so that's typically why it's in the CIP.
Additionally, it's programmatic, so we're trying to keep this going every year and doing the same amount of work. In some years we'll, um, not do the work and save the funds towards doing a bigger project the following year.
I guess, I mean, I guess my question is, as a policy, could like, could it be, could it be smarter to say, well, I mean, there's a reason, cause you're using bondable dollars and spreading it out, but at some point, would it make sense to concentrate, to pay for all this with cash through a expanded and somehow refined public works department rather than putting in the CIP because everything else you're looking at the CIP to do it? That might be a ridiculous question, but I, but.
No, no, that's a good question. Um, but the overall, overall thing is, you know, as you, you know, if we increase staff, that's increased in expenditures on the general fund side.
Exactly, right.
Uh, in terms of what we can do, in terms of how fast we can do it, uh, we have crews working on certain projects and the contractors can do it a lot more because they have a, you know, a larger, uh, crew size to be able to do more work. So, you know, it, it, I mean, it, it works out both ways, but I guess with the contractors, you know, you have more people doing the job than we have internally. And then to increase our staff, that's a lot more dollars that we would have to add to the budget.
Okay.
I have a, a related question, if I may, because of the, um, line item on the transportation and access called small area plans, is, is that just infrastructure within the small area plans or is that small area planning? It's the latter? Again, cause that, to me, is a, a professional, uh, ex, expertise that could or should be internal to the department. And, and not, so this is just included as a capital because it's something that gets sourced out to a consultant and because it's over fifty thousand dollars, it's bondable?
So we look at the actual expenses before we actually sell the bonds. This is listed as bondable, but in this case, we may not sell bonds for, if we're just paying a consultant for a small area plan. I think originally, and Ryan can correct me if I'm wrong, but when the small area plan, um, initiative was contemplated and was put in the CIP, it was more for bricks and mortar kind of stuff as opposed to just plans.
Well, I just think that would be something to consider because it, it's, it's long-range planning that is typically done in-house. And as we do it, um, and develop the capacity to do that, I would think that this would go away, but.
True, and as Chrissy said, this was one that has morphed, a project that has morphed over time. When it was originally envisioned, there was dol, envisioned that we would have some dollars in there to do the actual planning portion of it. But over time, funds would build up to actually say, okay, we've created a plan for a certain corridor and now we have X amount of dollars to be able to execute that plan as well. Um, that hasn't always come to, to be as we've gone through. We tend to use these dollars more towards, to create those plans and then that way we can look at, is there a smart scale or revenue sharing or partnership dollars that we could use towards it?
So that it's more, it is really tied to the architectural engineering of a infrastructure piece like Elliott or Ridge or Belmont. Okay, but still, I mean, it's, I, and then I've also wondered, because I've heard that, that it kind of accumulates if it doesn't get spent. And, cause as the question came up about how to, when the planning commission made the Cherry Avenue, then a priority small area plan, and we didn't know whether there was money and then so, yeah, there's extra money then which shows up. So I, I don't, I, I'm just confused because then we outsourced that to the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. And there's not a capital piece in that. So I, maybe this is a different conversation.
No, what we wanna do is basically in the future, uh, look at that in terms of these bondable projects and look at how much is actually appropriated per year, so you know what was spent. I know I talked with the mayor about this in terms of at the council meetings, to actually say when the papers come forward, how much money have we spent on a particular project? Or even when you talk about V dot dollars, how many V dot dollars are attached to this particular project?
Thank you, yeah.
Over a period of time, so to keep you up to speed, because like I said before, a lot of these projects, I mean, it's been planning for a number of years and then when it comes up, you know, that's, that's the question about how much has been spent over a period of time to get to this point.
Thank you.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Did one of my colleagues have some?
I did. But you can go ahead.
I, I can't hear you.
Go ahead. She said to go ahead.
Oh.
I just wanna talk about downtown, once we get there.
It's so, it's so far away. We're like spaced out, but it's all good. I had a question, um, about the zeroing out of the Washington Park basketball court renovations, and I apologize for my tardiness. Uh, but that in addition to the Tonsler Park master plan implementation, um, both of which have been zeroed out for the foreseeable future, is there a logic behind that or?
So the Washington Park, um, the expenses for Washington Park, that, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that was all that was needed to do the, the renovations on the basketball court? So it was, we didn't zero it out. It was just a one-time expense on there.
Okay, gotcha.
Tonsler Park, this matches what we had in the, um, I'm, I'm making sure I'm not misspeaking, but this matches what we had in the, um, budget plan last year. Now that there was an, an additional request for dollars at Tonsler Park, which we spoke about earlier, um, and that would be, again, on the council decision list on, as far as, uh, allocation of dollars for projects. But we did, we didn't zero anything out. It was just matching the dollars that were, um, in the previous plan.
Yeah, and I, and I, I can admit, uh, I may have missed it specifically revolving around Tonsler Park, but I do know that there is a strong sentiment around the community, specifically around there, that there's an expectation that, uh, promises haven't made revolving around a field house, the expansion of a field house out there, um, different things in terms of renovations for the park. And I know that, again, the community, specifically the folks who, who frequent that area, they're looking for such. And to see zero or that, this may not have been a priority from our council, um, is gonna be rather disheartening for them in a wide variety of reasons. Specifically, when you look at the amount of money that we're providing to Dart and Toe, and I know that, you know, those discussions have already been had, but people are looking for the renovations and the expansions at Tonsler and it's zeroed out.
Well, in that case, it, it, it would help, I think, any future councillor to know what more is needed. What is that cost? So when something is, so it's, there's a two different categories. If something's zeroed out because the job is complete, yes, great. If something's zeroed out because it's run out of money, that's another question, but we need, we need to know uh, if there's still more items on the program that haven't been completed. We need to know how much more money that's needed, that's needed.
Usually, and we will see an unfunded list. When it comes in front of the planning commission, will that be available? Cause that's where, I, I know that I asked, um, Ryan earlier about McIntyre Park's infrastructure, cause it's not anywhere on here, but it's on an unfunded list somewhere with dollars associated with it, as an example?
Typically, that's something we put together. I, I don't wanna speak for Chrissy on this.
So the, yes, we can put that together. Um, we, there was a request submitted for Tonsler Park and I'm, this is off the top of my head. Um, we can follow up with the specifics, but I think the request was roughly three million dollars.
Three point five, I think.
Three point five.
Three point, oh, okay.
Um, but I don't, I don't, do you have the specifics of what that got for the three point five? And, um.
It was a litany of different things, fieldhouse, park renovations. It was, it was a wide variety. And see, I wasn't, I'm not gonna lie, and again, I, I can just admit, I may have missed it, but I was under the impression that things were moving forward in terms of the drawing of the master plan and, and looking at what needs to happen in that regard. So then to see this, I was just a little taken aback, but I understand, um, you know, different things happen. I was more so just looking for an explanation in terms of, and not condemning your explanation, but just what, what happened, like what's up?
I don't, I don't have the history of that, but, uh, I know that that's like, you know, it, it's, it's on here as a capital project and like you said, it's zeroed out, but I mean, that's something that how, council has to discuss in terms of how much funding, uh, that, I mean, if you wanna put into it. But as I said before, in terms of, you know, the priority list about the overall expenditures for various projects. And I know it probably, I, I, like I said, I don't know the history of it.
Right, right.
But, uh, right now in terms of, you know, what we were doing and trying to do, uh, you know, there are some of those other projects that we were mentioning before that, you know, we're gonna have to prioritize. That's something that council wants to do because it's competing with these other multimillion dollar, uh, capital projects that we already have listed.
Right, I understand. I, I would just say even for future councils, um, just for their, their thought slash review when they're making these decisions, when you look at the fatality of Tonsler Park specifically in terms of the frequency and the, the amount of people who participate and the diversity in terms of the people who normally frequent our parks and the folks who come to that park on like a Sunday for the basketball games and whatnot. I mean, it's one of the more thriving places that we have in the city. And honestly speaking, for, for a lot of black folk, it's one of the only places in the city where they just feel safe. And then to see it not being the, the master plan implementation not taking place is, again, it just kinda took me aback. I was just surprised, but I know that's a discussion. I don't wanna belabor the point. I just wanted to make sure my point was heard in that regard and I appreciate my colleagues for allowing me to do so.
So to your point, um, Councilman West, um, last year there was seven hundred and fifty thousand in the budget for Tonsler Park for the, uh, master plan imple, implementation. Um, they did submit a request this year for four million, um, in twenty-one and four million in twenty-two. And so that's, again, that's the council's decision if they, if you wanna. And so, that's again, that's the council's decision if you want to put that back in, put that into the new CIP plan. We just basically took what was there and add nothing new to it.
Got you.
Based on affordability and the financial situation of the city, that's going to be your decision, what you want to take out that's already here to put in something new.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it would be helpful for us to get those lists of what the requests are from, you know, departments, so that we'll know, like what is, so we can have those conversations when they come up. Because it would appear that we have removed it or had that discussion, and maybe we would anyway, but just making sure that we, you know, that we have the information.
So, you want to see the budget requests? Budget requests from every department?
Well, in the past, I just thought it was the same, like spreadsheet, and there was just a whole other section called unfunded projects. It's also broken out by these categories. And that's how it was just helpful for me, I know, just to see like, oh, this is here. But that's where I knew Elliott wasn't funded, that's where I knew that the McIntyre infrastructure wasn't funded, just to kind of see what's out there. Because otherwise, unless people come to us, we're not aware of some of those things. So, it's just helpful to have it comprehensively. I think last year, the unfunded was a bigger number than we could fund. I mean, it's the reality that we're in. And that's why I think it's just important for us all to recognize, like, we're not going to be able to do all this.
I mean, and I understand the method, like this forces us to do our due diligence, which I appreciate as well. But I do, I agree with Mayor Walker as well as Vice Mayor Hill. In years past, when it was kind of done in that method in which we could just see the unfunded opposed to funded, it just allows us to be able to see things more clearly. And just for the record, I do hope that my colleagues on council, if we can have a further discussion, doesn't have to be tonight, or the future council, if we can indeed look at putting the funding back into Tonsler Park in the master plan implementation, I think it's extremely important for our community and again, the viability of our city.
And we'll provide those documents you just requested.
Okay, thank you.
So, the two point six million dollars for the downtown mall, what is that for?
Oh, that, oh, that's for the terror study?
So, that amount is for the...
Is it for implementation?
Paul, you want to come up?
Because we've studied it, and now we're, we have different options for...
Good evening again. Yes, the two point six million dollars would include public engagement and also talking to downtown business owners about some of the options that we have available, creating a plan of action that would end up in design and having engineering drawings and going to bids. So, the two point six would be inclusive of public engagement, design, and construction.
So, that is just that part of it? So, then, once you get all of that, then what's the projected expenses moving forward?
To actually implement it?
That would be for construction, through construction.
Oh, you're saying not just construction documents, but actual construction? Oh, okay, I missed that part. It's not just design documents, like we've talked about with other topics?
That's correct, it includes construction.
It would include construction, okay.
And what are we constructing?
Well, the actual infrastructure would be determined on, again, what the public, you know, what the public engagement comes out, what the BAR will accept. And it also will have, I think, a hand in terms of what we're looking at to protect the public from. And I don't think that, that level of protection has been determined yet. We have a report that speaks to the different levels of threat and what those requirements might look like, but we haven't settled on what the choices are yet.
So, we're going to spend two point six million dollars on perceived threats?
No, they're not perceived threats. And primarily, what it's going to address is the errant drivers that go down the mall currently. So, you know, it'd be the folks that are looking at their GPS or their smartphone, and it says turn left on Main Street, and they're actually driving down the mall. So, we have quite a few instances where that's happened. It's primarily to create a barrier between the interface between the vehicular traffic and the pedestrians and create awareness that they're crossing a street.
Okay, are we going to have a discussion about this?
We can have a good discussion.
Okay. I just don't think that with all of our priorities, that we should spend that much money on how someone crossed the mall or whether they turn. I mean, if, that should, I don't know, but I just would like more information.
Yeah, we'll provide more information also too, you know. And that's, I mean, once again, that's a council decision, if that's what you want to do. This was more so just to decrease, you know, the probability of something happening on the downtown mall to pedestrians who walk along and shop at different businesses and go to different restaurants.
So, I can tell you in the interim, what we've done is we've moved planters down on the mall, we've done upgraded signing, pavement markings, we've removed some obstructions that were down inside the right-of-way and tried to create a clear visual for the drivers so that they know when they get to the mall that they're actually interfacing with pedestrian traffic. So, we've taken those intermediate steps, so we do have time to address this in a larger conversation.
So, other than 2017, how many accidents have been on the mall that we are, that we would spend this amount of money for?
I think it goes beyond an accident, so I, and I can ask Chief Brackney and Chief Baxter to come up with maybe, if they have reports that have been documented. But I have folks that send me videos of residents that are driving down the mall. They think it's a street. And so, we have heavily, you know, heavy pedestrian traffic on a weeknight, on a Friday night, and there are cars driving down the mall because it's open and accessible.
So, I think this is also when we have to make a decision and we can't meet everyone's needs, right? So, if we're talking about the amount of money and all the projects that are unfunded, and then we have, like we had a couple of weeks ago, the, a couple of months back, about the discussion of whether just close the streets or not. I would still, you know, like full information about like what this money would be spent on and whether that's an expense based on all of the other things that potentially on the unfunded list, whether this is the priority.
Correct, and what we can do is provide options, you know. So, it would be, option A could be bollards along the mall, the two mall crossings stay open. It could be closing one crossing, it could be closing two crossings. I mean, there's different scales of affordability to those types of things, and so...
But do we need a consultant to tell us that?
Again, for some of the design, the preliminary design work, that's outside the scope of any of the engineers that we have when you talk about K-rated bollards and installations. And I'll give you an example, on the Belmont Bridge design, we actually used Timmins to determine what the proper K-rating was for the bollards that were underneath the, for the design of the new bridge. So, I mean, that's something that's got a technical expertise that we can't do in-house, that we would rely on a consultant to provide for us. But in terms of just construction and, you know, basic construction engineering estimates, we can do some of that in-house based on our, the plans that we've sold in the past and what the bid items look like. So, we could provide a, you know, a relatively close estimate. Does that help?
And if I may ask or make a comment, Mr. Oberdoffer, and I did see Chief Brackney come in. My understanding too, that what precipitated this was actually in the wake of August 12, 2017. And there was, and discussions was, I remember when we had the public meetings for the first anniversary, the vulnerabilities were quite clear to both Chief Baxter and Chief Brackney about our downtown mall. So, I do think that there was a legitimate discussion going on here, if I'm...
I would agree. Would you like to speak to that?
Thank you. Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, there were legitimate discussions about what does that look like in terms of mitigating risk? And that council and the city manager specifically would have to determine whether is the risk level or the threat level that they're comfortable with, and then what would our response be to that? Part of that would not necessarily involve community engagement in terms of determining that risk. The community should be part of the information and education process. But when we're looking at our threat, the council's going to have to decide, as I presented, what would that threat actually be beyond a singular incident? When we looked at the number of accidents that had occurred on the pedestrian mall between vehicles and pedestrians, with the exceptions of August of 2017, we were not able to find any. But there are errant and distracted drivers who use the crossovers to make a left-hand turn or who will park in the middle of the pedestrian walkway. So, I think there's ways that you can mitigate the risk there, depending on what type of risks that we're attempting to mitigate. And part of those conversations, I guess I would have to look at the two point six million, I'm just hearing about this for the first time, to see also what that might look like in terms of reduction of harm or risk to the community.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like the point to be made, and thank you, Chief Brackney. In regards to risk, I completely understand why the numbers and the data may reflect that there may not be a high risk, quote unquote, on the mall. Symbolically and psychologically, we need to look at how we're going to address that perspective. The mall there in itself represents a very traumatic place for a lot of people here in our community. And we can't just push that aside for numbers and data that may reflect that there is not a huge risk. Every day when, with some people walking down that mall, they're reminded of what happened when a car literally almost ran them over, and then for some people, ran them over, and then for one person, lost their life. That may not be quantified through data, but psychologically and the impact that it has, it has to be taken into account. And I think we do ourselves a disservice when we do not take that into account and look at different measures that are going to appease members of the community. I'll just leave it at that, because I only have a few days left.
And I understand that, but the conversation a couple of months ago was around whether you close the access points to the mall or whether you leave them open. And there were members of the community who had been harmed or had been there that day who thought that you should close it, there were business owners who thought you should leave it open. And so, what I'm just saying and weighing how we spend this money, we just need to have those conversations, which will be difficult. And if it's this fear associated with it and the best route, after you factor in changing traffic patterns, all of that stuff, would be closing it, then maybe that's a conversation we need to have. If not, then not. I just think that we need more information about it. All right, we'll now open it for public comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
Hi, Jason Halbert, 2633 Jefferson Park Circle. I'm the incoming co-president for the Frye Springs Neighborhood Association. Thanks for letting us have an opportunity to speak. I just wanted to understand a process point, which I think your point about what was unfunded would answer my question. Because we appreciate the neighborhood CIP request form that's now a new process for the city, which is great. And we've submitted the same thing for two years. And just don't, I mean, it makes the list of the neighborhood, this is last year's, from the same meetings last year. These are what the neighborhoods submitted. But it's hard to see how it's either translated to your budget or not. Did it get cut on the floor, left on the floor, or how, what's the process? I want to see some transparency about the process. If it didn't make the list because of our priorities collectively, that's fine. We just need to understand how it's, if it's going to be. Says, other neighborhoods have talked about projects that have been on the list since 1971 and just stay on the list at zero, and that's kind of silly. So, that was one. And then the second one is very specific to this. I work in the many fields, but one of which is solar. You have a solar line item in here, it was a hundred thousand, it's now to seventy-five thousand for city buildings and schools. With the new changes at the General Assembly, there are going to be some bills that are going to come through. And you can do this now, but it's going to become even easier. But Orange County, Fairfax County, Loudoun County, Augusta County, Albemarle County, lots of counties and some cities have already used power purchase agreements, PPAs, to have no upfront capital outlay and put solar on their buildings and schools. And this will reduce the electrical expense over the life of the solar for the school by significant amount. So, without any capital outlay, you can be reducing your electric bills at various buildings. But for some reason, I think it's a vestige of a former employee at the city, the city thinks it's going to build its own solar on all of its buildings, and you keep putting this number in here. It's just not the right way to go, in my opinion. I'm happy to talk at length with anybody on staff that needs to understand more about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am curious, as a former neighborhood leader, what is that process and how is it being followed? And is it on our list somewhere?
Just sit at the front, Paul.
Yeah, I know.
Next time, I'll sit up front.
Plenty of chairs.
Yeah, so, we got a comprehensive list from the neighborhood associations and the requests for the various projects. And so, what we did was, they were submitted to the staff, the staff reviewed it and made comments on whether it was already existing in the CIP, whether it was something that was in, in the works in a maintenance sense. I think the best thing for us to do would be to compile all of those and be transparent about it in terms of from neighborhood to neighborhood, what does that look like in a master list and compare it to the CIP. I know we have a neighborhood meeting coming up with the association, so that would be something I can definitely get put together. So, at least, you know, before the CIP is voted on, you can see transparently where those lie and if whether or not we can do some. Some of the requests are just unaffordable at this time for us.
I think that would be helpful, especially in light of that meeting coming up.
You want to also talk about, you know, our, you know, terms of reducing our carbon footprint and, you know, our team that's working to do that?
Right, right. So, the Environmental Sustainability Division has been working on the climate action policy. And as part of that, you know, there's a huge solar footprint. We have a pretty good nest egg of solar funds available currently. Then we're looking at some rooftop projects, but primarily with the PPAs available, that's something that we're definitely moving towards. There's some, some funding that would have to be done upfront so that we could apply for that agreement. But I would have to submit again that, you know, an increase in solar, there are only so many rooftops. Initially, we were doing the city schools, we moved to the government buildings, but we're just out of basically rooftop space. So, the larger-scale projects that he was speaking to are really the way to go. And thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm Jill Trishman Marks. I'm the executive director of the McIntyre Botanical Garden. We are partners with the Department of Parks and Rec. We have eight point five acres designated in McIntyre Park for our project. I'm pleased to announce to you tonight that we've just finished our schematic plan for the garden, and it won a national award from the American Society of Landscape Architects.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We'll be going out to San Diego tomorrow to receive that award.
Oh, take me with you.
Bring some of the water back.
Support for the garden has never been greater. We have over a hundred and fifty volunteers. Since we started clocking volunteer hours in 2017, we have over twelve thousand hours of donated time. Our, our financial support has never been greater. It's gone up twenty-five hundred percent in the past two years. And that was before the announcement of our award. Because of our location adjacent to the infrastructure proposed for McIntyre Park, we can't do anything until that infrastructure is installed. As part of the schematic plan for the garden, we had a cost estimate that was done by Downey and Scott at twenty-five million dollars to build this project. And the Board of Directors is, and myself, are prepared to raise that money to provide this gift from the community to the community. So, my understanding from looking at your budget is that we're at least five years out before that infrastructure is going to be funded. And my question to you is... And my question to you is, we've got this momentum that we've built with our constituents, we've got this award, and we're prepared to do the heavy lifting to give this gift to the community. How do I tell them that, let's put that on hold for five years? Thank you.
I'd like to, I mean, I'll respond to that. I think that it's, you know, in balancing all the priorities here, I've met with the folks, and I do think that a, what they're envisioning could do a lot for this community. It could be, it could fit our, a lot of our most natural strengths for kids and families of all walks, and it could be a real jewel that would make, just like the park system is a real jewel. I mean, we have, we have one of the best park systems in Virginia, and, like, by any measure, and if it's, it would be a real public asset, because it'll be right in the center of the city, and everybody will be able to use it the way that's designed. It'll be really, it'll take advantage of a lot of the aspects of being in central Virginia. I just want to emphasize that it would create something that would be usable by everybody. And I was convinced by that during the meeting that I did, but I know that we have to look at, we're going to have to weigh priorities here, us and the next council. But it does, it makes a lot of sense to do the public investment that allows them to privately fund it.
In that regard, kind of like the way we use local dollars to leverage state and federal funds for bridge and street improvements, could we please get information about what is this particular infrastructure that they need, and how much it's going to cost, and then how much money the McIntyre Botanical Garden has already raised, and they are planning to then invest in once they have that infrastructure in place? That way, we get an idea of the public and private investment ratios, and how much there's a partnership being formed. That's what I would think would be useful information to know upfront, before a decision's made.
That echoes a statement I was going to say, and I think that, obviously, this is one component of it, but there's also, you know, other funds being raised for other surrounding amenities within the broader McIntyre Park, which I think we should be additive to that. I think it's multiple groups that have a lot of energy around activating that park in a central way, and also the connectivity to that park, so that all neighborhoods can have greater access to these amenities. And that was really what was compelling to me. I'll be honest, the skate park is what really has opened my eyes to understanding all that we are letting just to sit kind of dormant, and not really activating so much of that acreage. And it's because there just isn't anywhere for anyone to really park, or to use facilities. And I think that, you know, obviously, the gardens is one component, but there's also a passive part of the park, and then adding more just for the skate park, and more amenities to kind of surround that. And so I think we need to look at it pretty holistically, understand, I think there's just, there's a lot of private interest in those, in that area, and in that area, in that park specifically. And I agree, I think that if we can look at it through the lens of leveraging private dollars, as we look to leverage funding from the state and the federal government for other projects, that I think it's an important way to view it.
So we can get that information for you, but in terms of the specific details, the request that was submitted was a $4 million request in '21, and $4 million in '22. And I believe, pardon me?
What was that for?
That part, I'm not an expert, but we'll get that for you and send it to you, because I don't know if all of that was needed to complete the infrastructure or not, so.
And I'll just say, because we have to take other comments for us to go, but even with this, I think what we're asking for, and I hope what the new council will be asking for, is just the information to look at, not that anything would be guaranteed, and that we are weighing all of that.
I think it was a 3-3, and Ryan was, and I'm not talking about this, then it became a 4-4. At one point, I thought it was a 3 million and 3 million.
It was, last year it was 3 and 3, and this year it's 4 and 4. The first $4 million, the first phase of the infrastructure was for underground utilities. It was for a parking lot, a drop-off, a turnaround, drop-off, a restroom, ADA restroom, park pavilion, and a splash pad. And then the additional $4 million was for an ADA bridge that connected across the creek from the north side to the south side of the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question, too, because I notice I frequently am riding my bike along MacIntyre, Ridge McIntyre, and onto the Warner Parkway, and we had invested quite a bit of money in that parking lot in front of the cars, and it's empty all the time. I don't see anybody using that. Is that a question, and this, the question of signage and access came up because of the Vietnam Memorial Access, but either that was a real misplaced investment, or we're just not doing enough to promote it, it could be used as parking for the skate park, because it's now easy to get to the skate park because of the new trail that was put in place? I'd like to really understand the utilization of that, and how we can get it better utilized.
We'll take a look at that in terms of signage, but I know, I drive past it every day, it is empty.
It's empty. And it was like state-of-the-art.
The trail system we do have, you think that it would be used a lot more for the park, but we'll get the information requested. And just like anything else, as I mentioned before, you know, I mean, you have so many competing interests in terms of this capital budget and our affordability, you know, and we were going off of, basically, you know, the priorities, which was affordable housing and schools. And that's exactly what we did when we put the budget together, but, you know, when you talk about these other things, these are, you know, these are new interests that we have to be able to look at in terms of affordability. And like I said, you know, these are things that you want to do, you know, taking consideration, you know, our overall, our bond limit, taking consideration to all the other things that we need to do internally to get taken care of. I mean, we talked about compensation, we talked about other things like that, as well as if you do want to do these things, you know, we have to look at staffing in terms of, you know, do we want to, you know, reduce staff to be able to afford these things, or the other thing that you want to look at is, do you want to raise taxes to be able to afford these things? So there are all the things that we have to take in consideration when we look at all these major projects for these multimillion-dollar capital projects.
And so maybe that's how I would like for these to be presented, when it's new, and it's things that we are considering. Because, for instance, last year, we had a very difficult time having the conversation about increase of taxes, but maybe if it's presented, you know, from these unfunded-list standpoints, and it's more, you know, of a, you know, desire versus some of the things like schools and housing for people, then that, the community may weigh that in a different way. My next other question was, when the conversation, I vaguely remember the botanical garden conversation, did the city agree to these infrastructure costs at the beginning? Because I thought I remembered it just, that this was going to be something that was funded from the community. So I'm just asking if we, you know, if there are staff and council at the time agreement to pay for, or was it considered that all of the money necessary would be raised?
I don't know. Do you recall, Ryan?
It was my understanding that the infrastructure was our commitment to do, and then everything else was going to be coming from private dollars.
That's correct. The agreement that we have, the memorandum of agreement that we have with the Department of Parks and Rec, this infrastructure serves the entire park. It's not just for the botanical garden. So it is the responsibility of the city to do the infrastructure. On our five, our 8.5 acres, it is our responsibility to raise the funds for the design, the construction, and maintenance of the garden.
So was there a timeline from the city to do that infrastructure that was not tied to the garden being completed?
I think that my interaction with Brian Daley was that they were waiting to start funding it till they felt like we were ready to start building. And so with the, they submitted it in the budget last year, because we had started the schematic design process. So he saw us being prepared to follow up, so he was trying to front-load so that we, so that the city didn't slow down the momentum of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Janet Quachi, 109 Robinson Woods. First, a question of clarification. Is this in, under the affordable housing, 800,000 for the CAF per year? No, it's for the next five years, so it's $160,000.
Well, what it was, it was funded at $800,000 for '20, as well as $800,000 for the next five years. But what we wanted to do was go back to council to talk about that each year, to talk about the overall expenditures in the CAF fund. So we, we put 800,000 in for FY '21, but the out years, we didn't put anything. Because new councils may come in, they may, you know, have a different discussion in terms of how much they want to fund in that particular area. And if our expenditures are, you know, over, and we need to put it in some other areas, our expenditures, you know, we need to make those adjustments.
Right, okay. So I understand that this is sort of a, it's a planning document and a kind of a five-year vision. And it, you know, as a funding strategy, it sort of reflects and represents, to me, significant and important investment in sort of the middle area of our housing system, our housing continuum, and tends to kind of lop off both ends of the affordable housing continuum. You know, for example, I see a set aside for housing rehab, I don't see a set aside for permanent supportive housing, or for affordable homeownership. And I just, you know, as a funding strategy, I just wonder if that is reflective of the council's will, and if you believe that that is the will of the citizens of Charlottesville. You know, when we talk about psychological distress, I think we could learn a lot from talking about, you know, to the hundreds of people who experience homelessness every day in our city, as well as people of descendants who lost, you know, their homes and their businesses that they've owned due to actions that the city took. So I guess I wanted to see if this was truly reflective of.
Well, and I just want to say, too, if you look at all the money that's put into housing, which is inclusive of FY '20, which we're in, we're talking about over $50 million that has been put into housing. So I don't want you to think that we didn't put any money in there.
Oh, no, no. It's a significant investment. It's more sort of the prioritization and the allocation of different, different funding towards different, I guess, products.
This is where I get, if we're not able to, if we know that these other larger projects that are much more a point in time aren't going to come to fruition, I'd rather free up a more, a few hundred thousand dollars more to give it to the flexible dollars. For example, this year, we were, our intention was, is to allocate it to a project that is going to provide, like, across things, too, like that very distinct need with the current money that we have. And so I'm, I think it's important to have those flexible dollars for those projects that come up, working with other development opportunities that are outside of, you know, some of these more larger-scale projects that are at a point in time. But I think that on the whole, there is certainly a significant investment. I can understand that there's just the allocation, especially in these years where the phases are coming up.
Thank you.
But even in that way, we would have to weigh that if we spend it on something else, whenever the request came for that funding, we have now spent it, so we're talking about more dollars.
And I think this is a good time to also bring up the fact that there has been a discussion about that synthetic tax increment finance district idea to create a sustainable funding stream for the CAF. It came up again last night with some discussion about the foreign-based code for the strategic investment area. That discussion, the planning commission, needs more time to review that foreign-based code, so the code itself has been deferred, there was no decision on that. But I did hear, I don't think I was the only one that heard, that there was real interest still in the tax increment finance district that would have been some percentage that would be then earmarked for the CAF. And the question was, what, was the land area involved? It was investigated on the part of Anita Morrison and the Partners for Economic Solutions for, just on the 16-acre area that's around the Ices property, and, but it did generate close to $800,000 at build-out. So I just offer that up, because it's going to probably be something the next council is going to talk about, but I do think there's an appetite for something like that, to create a steady stream of funding for the CAF that is not so dependent upon the discussions about annual priorities.
I still think that if we set the priorities, then we should fund them. Even if we direct revenue towards a project, it's still going to take away dollars from something else that it would have potentially funded. So this is still about us setting a priority and sticking to that priority, no matter what other funding comes up. But I do understand what.
And this is kind of like the same idea of the budget policy for our schools, that sets a 40% to go to the schools every year. This is another, this isn't citywide, but it's based on the areas that have received some special attention and understanding. So, and, you know, if, for example, if something like this did take place for the entire SIA, it would be able to capture the increased revenue and target it to the housing fund for the projects that are going to come online on Avon Street. The projects coming online on Garrett Street. There's going to be substantial amounts of revenue coming in. Just need to get that out there, because it's been, been talking about that for three years.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
Hello, my name is Caitlin DeCampus-Lopez. I am the Director of Climate Policy of the Charlottesville Climate Collaborative, and, well, first question, just for clarification, the first, the five-year projection of expenses is just for your better planning, but it's not a thing that the council is committed to do or not? So just the commitment, it's just for the next 12 months, financial year 2021, right? So if something is not reflected here, doesn't mean that we cannot talk about that next year, and et cetera, right? Yes?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. The other thing is, I'm curious about transportation. I saw in this slide, transportation and access, I feel bullets talking about transportation, and I've asked for access to a more detailed spreadsheet with the expenses, but I'm curious about investments, perhaps, in mass transportation or the CAT system. I just have a strong sentiment that transportation is lies in, if my understanding is that it lies only in goal three, a beautiful and sustainable, natural, built environment, but I think that it's very much related as well with goal one, an inclusive community of self-sufficient residents. So the transportation topic shows a chart where you say, what's the ridership per year? And you say, you mentioned that right now it's medium per year, and it's decreasing, but it's aligned with national trends as the gas price is kind of low. So first, I would like to know if the, what's the source for that? Which study are we talking about, when we're talking about national trends? Does it really support our, or, I don't know, is it enough for us to just think that that's okay, because that's a national trend? Or are we trying to lead with climate action, et cetera, et cetera? So that's important for us to not just follow national trends, to lead, go beyond that? So thank you very much.
I have our CAT Director here that can answer that question.
Carla Williams, Director of CAT and People Transportation. First question about national trends, there is a national trend that's going on in the public realm for transit agencies that haven't really looked at their networks in a while, and that's part of the issue that's been going on nationwide, is that those that haven't looked at and redesigned their networks have seen a significant decline in their ridership. We want to reverse that model here. So the, one of the things that we're trying to make sure is that we answer the call as regards to the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation has put a new performance-based model on all transit systems in Virginia. If you're not a performing, a high-performing model, you're going to get less revenue. So what we're trying to do is basically turn that tide. So what we're trying to do is basically turn that tide. We do have sliding ridership that's been going over the last five years. We've gone from basically 2.4 million unlinked passenger trips to about 1.8. We need to reverse that course and figure out a way how to make our network better, more productive, so we can actually get more money and make the system better for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, I'm Peter Krebs from the Piedmont Environmental Council. I'm not going to get into the weeds, except I did get pulled into the weeds on one thing I'll do last. But just to remember that Charlottesville's a city, and Councilman Signer asked, why are we spending all this money on sidewalks? And the short answer is, cities build sidewalks. And your staff does a great job of, you know, pulling blood from a stone and getting matches and from the state, the federal government, and from the private sector. We've seen some pretty awesome stuff that way. But the city has to be serious with it. It's not going to be a case where homeowners come out and build their own sidewalks, or businesses along Preston all get together and, you know, make it safe to ride a bike on Preston. That's, that's the city's job. And that, that's really a long-term investment, properly capital. But it's also the human capital. It's about having people be healthy, having them have access to opportunity, having them able to get to work or to school and live cheaply. And the costs of not doing that are also very predictable. If we don't have a walkable, bikeable community, we will be sicker. More people will be hurt, or heaven forbid, all too often mortally hurt on the streets. So it's so important that the city be serious with bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. We'll talk over the course of this long cycle, so I won't go on that anymore. I did want to say a quick thing about the downtown mall study. And I have to agree with Nakia on this one, that I'm glad that the city is looking at this issue. But I think before we talk about implementation, we need to see what's on the table. In my work, I see excellent studies where we are very methodical about bringing people together, looking at what we want to do, and then going and doing it. Or not. So let's see the downtown mall study before we actually talk about funding implementation. Maybe the community will decide, you know what, Parks and Rec, high five, you've solved the problem. Or maybe we need something intense, but let's look at some actual data first. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I would just like to add that if you're going to have a really crackerjack public transit system, you have to have really good sidewalks connected to bus stops so that people actually have that infrastructure in place to use the buses.
I just want to add, I'm going to miss hearing Ms. Galvin say crackerjack.
It should be crackajack.
Crackerjack, okay.
All right, any closing? All right, thank you all for coming out. Have a good evening. Thanks.